Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Here.
DePena, here.
Graziano.
Here.
Nattari.
Here.
Robel.
Here.
Councilmember Schimmelbergman I'll be attending this evening and Mayor Melman.
Here. Sunshine.
Pursuant to the requirement to the Oklahoma Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was published in the Thursday, July 7th editions of the Bellville Times &amp; Star Ledger. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the Bellville Town Hall bulletin board and copies are on file in the Municipal Service Caucus.
Plagiarist.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which we stand, under God, in the digital, legislative, and justice of all.
Okay, right, welcome you to our first meeting in September, I'm sorry, November. As most of you know by now, the first meeting of the month is always our combined conference last regular meeting, which means that any elected official, members of the administration, directors can put any topic on for discussion. When you see that discussion or hear that discussion, it is a conversation in and between the council and our professionals. Unfortunately, there is no public participation during this portion of the meeting. However, if you see something or hear something that interests you, you most certainly can bring that up during public comment. So without further ado, the first topic on is put on by Manager Iaccone and it is best practices.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Excuse my back, but the Department of Community Affairs requires a best practice survey that each municipality fill out. And the first item I wanted to share is that this survey, which is a requirement, the due date is November 10th, through our Finance Department, Mr. Di Maria, we've been able to pile it on November 1st. So it's always nice when we're a little ahead in curveball. But again, the best practices survey, it's about approximately 70 questions that you have to fill out. And you answer these 70 questions, some of them are as easy as, does your municipality have a website? Does your municipality have electric charging stations? And for every answer, you get different points. And on our preliminary submission to the DCA, if you meet the criteria, that's the amount of state aid you got. So just based on how many yes questions we already answered on the survey, tells us that our state aid will be at the minimum of what we receive. Could be more, but not less. And again, great job by our Finance Department.
Any questions? Any questions for the manager?
Just thank you for having me on, huh?
Next topic, we have Councilman Cazarelli, adult recreation leagues.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to bring up adult rec leagues, which are basically like indoor basketball, volleyball, pickleball, dodgeball, soccer. Most towns around here do all these sports. It's a good, number one, it's good exercise, it's good, healthy, but number two, it's a little revenue source for the town. I know the Friendly House is not really utilized too much. I think it would be great if we do it in there. Also, we have that little footsaw field down at Number Nine School. So, Ann, could we have our rec department look into making a couple leagues? I mean, you've got to work on this pretty quickly if you want to do it for the winter, but I know I'm pretty confident that they could probably do it.
A, I think is an excellent idea and B, I would be very surprised if we couldn't get, you know, start off with an open gym Tuesday, Monday.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have to do all of these, but you know.
Right, it could be volleyball, it could be that, and then hopefully it forms into a league, but I'll start moving on that tomorrow.
Cool.
And especially preparing for spring when we start looking at pickleball, because that's huge and a lot of people are interested in that.
Yep.
Now we'll challenge the manager to a big woman match on our local.
Ann, could you give us maybe an update on like the next meeting or two?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Questions to Councilman Cazarelli about that? No, you have your own thing, Tom.
Yeah, ma'am, but I had to come up with a few if you don't mind. Thank you.
A few?
So, Ann, any update on Fairway Avenue about the pumps?
No, so what we have to do is, and what we should have done, which we have, and so, and I'll make sure Kelly and I, we will, tomorrow, we will submit all of those proposals that we did receive, because we received, I believe it was like three or four. So Kelly's writing herself a note and I will write myself a note that we distribute those proposals and then we can discuss it at the next, or part of the meeting. That's clearly an item that we have to take action on.
And then I have just another one on the strike, stormwater study. I know we entered into a stormwater study, we looked at two consultants in the past, just trying to, that's townwide. I'm trying to.
That, I'm assuming that study, I, a couple days ago, I have a binder in my office that's that.
No, that wasn't in the binder, the binder in our office was not townwide, I don't believe.
Okay.
That, I believe, was for one place, correct?
I don't recall that, but I certainly can get you that answer.
Okay.
It's the stormwater.
We did it townwide, but I think the one the mayor's talking about is one for, that Tom Hiren set out and it was for one particular.
Just got it like, a day or two ago.
Right, because of the planning board. That's why. Yeah, but it was based on a, something going on in the planning board. Probably. And then DPW, equipment down there. I know you guys have been working on it, I'm just trying to get a status on getting rid of the old cars and making that nice, because I know there's been a lot of concern and I know Bobby and.
And that part of the resolution for today, the auction? I see a lot of heads nodding.
Part of it.
Part of it.
We are still tracking down some titles, such as an issue, some of these vehicles are over 20 years old and 30 years old.
Right.
The titles is the only thing that's blowing us up.
Even for scrapping the title?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Manager for the manager? No? Anybody else for Councilman Cazarelli? Nope? The third topic, I think we're gonna, we're gonna hold off on that, Chief, correct?
Sure.
Yep, okay. So next item on the agenda is report to the manager.
Good evening again. First, I have to start off by saying the Monday night schedule kind of confused my schedule, I made a commitment, somewhat of a family commitment, it was a promise. So Chief put on his blue suit and he said that when I do leave a little early tonight, no one's even gonna notice. Be brothers. But I am gonna be, obviously, for the manager report, may stay around for the public hearings. And I start off by just, just some footnotes. An ordinance for introduction to Mayor Castle, to the person that, person that haven't received an increase since 2014, it's only an introduction tonight, but by way of background, haven't received an increase since 2014. Our person guys do an incredible job, serious, it's something that we can't thank them enough for. And the ordinance of introductions for 50 cents for three years for a dollar, over three year period, their agreement, and again, they don't have to use it, but their agreement will end right when all the other unions end. So just the timing is good, so I wanted to just mention that in my report. Also, one particular ordinance tonight for public hearing, I just want to give Mayor Castle some background, there's some rhyme and reason hopefully behind everything we do, I think this is really good. One is a new title of a coordinator for state federal grants, $6,000 stipend. There's no secret, Gabby has been doing an honorable job for years now, not weeks or months. She's been working, never received a stipend. And again, the amount of work that she puts in for these grants that we have been successful on is, this stipend is, you know, just a very small appreciation of the work that she does. So that one's easy. Also, between our construction department, our planning board, my office, we've been lobbying for a new title that we put as planning aid. And again, this is a recommendation coming from construction zoning, planning board subcommittee. This is a position that we think is going to be very fruitful for the planning board. Lot of developments going on in Bellville. People are knocking on our doors every day. And again, we need, we need that coordination. And this job clearly is warranted. And again, this recommendation is not just from the manager, but clearly, planning board nights of construction. So that was just something I wanted to clarify. And also, if you see that we've included some of our department head salary ranges, this is what I would consider, you know, a fiscal move, which could, you know, rebenefit in the future. Right now, we have what I would consider upper management, 70% of our upper management either has the age and the time or close to it, that they can retire at any time. So by us making these particular ranges, this does, what you see here is a range, it's not an increase for any one particular person. And I, I tell you as we speak, there is no intention for any increase as I speak tonight. But again, these salary ranges, what we try to do is try to do some parity. If you have a department head who both have 18 years experience, but there's a big difference in it, it obviously, you know, we tried to address that. And what you see is, again, if a department head believes or upper management believes, again, this range gives us flexibility. Gives us flexibility that we can hire somebody with a college certificate, or in the event that we hire somebody with years of experience, it gives us that more flexibility. So that's why, again, when you look at a salary order and you say, oh, that's an automatic raise, it is not an automatic raise. But it's something that I think what we're doing from a fiscal approach could actually save us money. I think that's gonna be my report tonight.
Anybody questions to the manager about his report? Anything beyond his report?
This has really nothing to do here, importantly, it goes back to what Brittany Cazarelli said before, that adult recreation league, which I think is a good idea. Now, Anthony, do you think, I know we were interrupted with COVID for quite a while, do you think you can go back to the drama program for kids? Do you think we can go back to that?
I think now is the perfect time to take a look at that. We were making some great progress and then COVID came. You know, we had, I think we had a title for the program called Show Stop It. We were getting excited, we missed, we kind of quickly represented this, not the.
Yeah, and we had classes and then it had stopped.
So it's something that I could go ahead and take a trip again.
But I also like what Minnie said about the adult recreation, you know, we should also think about adults' likeness to the rec department, maybe we can have some drama classes for adults. The Bellville Library did this about 25 years ago and it was packed, everybody was aspiring, might be an aspiring star, but it really, really was packed, so think about that.
I wrote myself an author.
Sure.
Then, Anthony, I did forget to ask something else. Gas. Where are we at with the gas? I know that's been, we're looking at the new automation, the FOBs, do we have an update on that?
Lean on Bobby a little. Bobby, I know you and Willie have been working on the latest company, we had a couple of prices that we looked at. This is the FOB system.
Oh, going back?
Well, yeah, we looked at getting our gas for a third-party operator and it seemed like when we buy it wholesale, that's where the savings is. Where the savings, where we're even saving even more, is when we get better confinement with this FOB system.
Okay, cool. But we're going down that path.
Hopefully not subject to change yet, but we're leaning towards the FOB system.
Right, thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the report of the mayor, so I always start with some past events. Police Department had a very successful spooktacular event. It was the second Halloween event the township had, and thank you, Chief, for putting that on, it was very well attended. Speaking of events, we have a bunch of upcoming events. Tomorrow, Town Hall is closed, why is Town Hall closed? It is election day. Polls in Bellville are open from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Please make sure you get out and let your voice be known. This coming Sunday, busy day for Bellville and our police department, of course, because we have our not, our annual Veterans Day 5K race, starts at 9 o'clock with a gun start, and then we have our annual Veterans Day parade, always a big successful event, so busy day in Bellville for them. If you have not yet registered for the 5K, you can still register. We are closing in on just over 100, which is ahead of last year. And keep in mind, the overwhelming majority of people, I think, do come out last, same day. So we expect to have north of 120, 130 runners, and that's just a great event for some great causes. November 17th, Back to the Police Department, Community Safety Talk Day, 6:30 at Huesmith. Couple days after that, as of tomorrow, it will no longer be a rumor, but on Sunday, November 20th, for those of you who are soccer fans, for those of you who are Ecuadorian by any chance, it's gonna be a big day. Why is that? After four and a half years, the World Cup is finally starting. Traditionally, the World Cup is done every four years in the summer, but because it's in the Middle East, in Qatar, it's actually being done in December, I'm sorry, late November. So November 20th, Sunday, is the first game of the World Cup. It is host country Qatar versus Ecuador. So it looks like my civic association is teaming up with the township and some other sponsors to actually bring you a live feed of that event. It will be on a giant LED TV monitor at the high school complex where we do most of our summer concerts and our movies. It's gonna be a huge event. We're gonna cross our fingers that the weather holds up, but we do expect an enormous turnout based upon some of the early feedback that we've been getting. They'll be up on social media tomorrow, some posters will be out, there will be food trucks there, there'll be all kinds of things going on there. It could potentially be, and it's just not, it's for anybody who loves soccer, by the way, it's not, Ecuador got very lucky that they drew the first slot against the host country, it's only one game that day. But just to answer some questions that are gonna bound the rise, the USA does play the next day, it's 2:00 in the afternoon on Monday. So we're doing this on Sunday because it's the home opener, it's 11:00, it's a reasonable time for people to get out there and do that. And because of the costs associated with it and the money we have to raise through sponsorship to pay for it, we can only do it once. Plus, the further off you go, it's gonna be pretty cold, I think. So please be sure to look out for that. Friday, December 2nd, Bellville's having an energy assistance day. That's gonna be held at the Senior Center, you could talk about energy assistance programs, universal service, food pantry, comfort partners, and all kinds of other stuff regarding energy assistance on that day, which is Friday, December 2nd. And I believe we have a date for our winter festival, Mr. Iaccone? I want to say Saturday?
December 10th.
December 10th. Okay. Quick news, so today, we were fortunate in Bellville to have Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill in town. The Congresswoman does not represent Bellville, however, with the district changing and depending on the election results tomorrow, she may very well be our representative. And I've had a very close working relationship with her now for about four or five months. Hydrant Cleaning, check out the website, Hydrant Cleaning, it started today, it's gonna go until November 10th. You saw some recent social media, some info, we had the AARP Pocket Park unveiling, I think it was last Friday or so. Again, the local ARP club was there, great little pocket park, really nice, looking forward to having everybody check that out. So there's a anchor program, please be sure, I keep talking to finance people, I keep talking to even my own accountant. Nobody knows about this program. It is a legit program, I questioned it very early on. You will either get $2,500, $1,500, or $450 if you are a renter. I'm gonna try and get some information out through my civic to at least the senior population that's not on social media, but please do spread the word about that program, it is free money. We do have a turkey giveaway that's coming up, that's gonna be on the 19th. The next day is that Ecuador versus Qatar game. And as always, make sure you check out Nixol, it's our brand new or somewhat new reverse 911 company, we still need to get people registered for that. As you heard, somebody mentioned before about pickleball. Pickleball court is basically playable, it's not finished yet, it will not be finished until the spring, we need three or four days in a row of 75-plus degree weather. Who would have thought we may have had that in November like we have? If we had tried to do it, it would have never been 70 degrees out, but that, it is not finished. You might see a lines there, you might see a net there, it's somewhat playable. I don't believe we're gonna kick anybody out that's actively using it for pickleball, but it's not, please don't think it's done yet because it's gonna look a lot nicer come next spring. A great program, always happening at the library. And last news is that Bellville was recognized for our commitment to making walking and cycling to school safer. Police Department was involved in that award, a lot of awards coming in, whether it's Sustainable New Jersey, whether it's a bronze certification, or green initiatives, or it's these things like safe paths to schools, a lot of good things happening. Okay, that's it for my mayor's report. Next item on the agenda is committee reports, this is the first week of the month, so we do have committee reports. If any council member is involved in something specific, they want to give an update on, now would be the time. Deputy Mayor Graziano?
Nothing at this time.
Councilman Nattari? Set it? Councilwoman? Councilman? Councilman? Nope, we are good. Next on the agenda is the approval minutes.
Regular meeting in February 22nd.
Make a motion? We have a motion, we have a second. Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes. Communications?
None at this time, Ann.
Ordinances?
Ordinance number one for introduction and ordinance to amend ordinance number 3157, creating permanent positions and adopting reclassification compensation plans.
Need a motion?
Second.
We have a motion made and second. Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Take no part.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes. Two.
Ordinance number two for introduction, ordinance of the mayor and council in township Bellville, County of Vestix, New Jersey, adopting the 371-411 Main Street redevelopment plan.
Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion made and second, Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
No.
Robel?
No.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
Ordinance number three for introduction and ordinance to amend by general ordinances in township of Bellville, chapter 8-6A entitled Four Way Stop Intersections Designated.
Make a motion?
Second.
We have a motion made and second, Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes. Okay, we are on ordinances for public hearing, second and final reading.
Ordinance number one for public hearing and ordinance to amend by general ordinances in township of Bellville, chapter 8-2.2, parking prohibited at all times on certain streets.
Need a motion open for public, second? We have a motion made and open for public, all in favor?
Aye.
We are open for public hearing on this particular ordinance and this particular ordinance only. If you have any questions, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Mr. Frantantone?
Tried to avoid bringing this up because I went online and your, whatever that program's called, when you look at the agenda online, you could then look at this, when I clicked over, it started coming across my computer blocked. So why wasn't I able to access that?
That's probably local to your PC.
Was it blocked by the town?
That may be local to your PC with cookies or something like that, you may have to accept them.
But I've been doing it before.
That's weird.
The other night, it just came up, I clicked on it, then I wanted to see it, it comes up the little box like it usually does, I click and it says block, kept going.
It's usually a browser. I agree with you, it could head up these on your personal.
Well, but anyway, all right, so now what streets are these? What are we prohibiting parking in?
Little Street?
Little Street?
South side of Little Street.
All the way?
Uh, it's beginning at the point 207 west of chief, the southwest apex.
Motion to close public hearing and move for final adoption, second. We have a motion made and second to close public hearing and move for final adoption. Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes. Ordinance number two?
Ordinance number two for public hearing and ordinance to amend ordinance number 3634, creating permanent positions and adopting reclassification compensation plans.
Motion open for public, second. We have a motion made and second to open for public, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are now open for public commenting on this particular ordinance and this particular ordinance only. Mr. Dros?
Charles 95 Bell Street. I have a question on this, let me just, like, ask you. You have a range here, but do you want, whatever happened, I think years ago, they used to have an increment, good where you start at 70,000, so many years you get that, because if you're looking at it, I mean, I just feel uncomfortable with that, hey, 70,000, maybe next year you're gonna go a hundred thousand, 125,000. Shouldn't there be steps increments like the BMEA gets?
There are steps.
But it doesn't say it is, it should be posted here. And I know from years ago, old ordinances, they used to be in steps and show you how much with the range, was instead of a range of maybe another 40,000 next year if you like the guy or whatever.
I think it's, I think as per the contract, it's six steps, so you would take the difference.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, normally the steps used to be posted, but instead of something like this, this, you know, for the public to see that, you know.
It's automatic.
That somebody can jump $30,000 next year.
If it's a, if it's in the contract, or the contract is steps. In certain cases, not in the contract, there are most.
Yeah, all of these are steps.
That's the only inconsistency.
Are all of these in steps then? Everything here?
No.
No, they're not, that's what I'm saying.
So for instance, the coordinator for federal and state aid, that's just the flat $6,000?
Right, that one, I understand, Gabby does a good job anyway, so. What is the planning aid, and is that a new position?
Yes, that's what I mean.
And who's in that position?
No, but it's brand new. Hasn't been created.
You didn't hire anybody yet? Okay.
And we don't hire the managers.
Well, the manager, I know that. Okay, the next one, we know it's Gabby, that's fine. What about the rest of these, finance coordinator and that, and what is payroll? I never heard of that position.
Payroll clerk is exactly that title, it's a person who.
No, no, but the reason is you have one word there and also on resolution 13, you have your contract in payroll out, so I'm just trying to figure out the difference.
So it's, the person who handles payroll is the title that you see.
Right.
We presently have a third-party provider, A and P.
Right.
We're pro, we're going out and providing a contract that would actually save us money on A and P.
Of course, I was looking, it was a different name there, so I was just trying to.
That is, that is correct.
All right, so who's the finance coordinator and what payroll you, who's the finance coordinator? That's the only name I don't recognize here, who's the finance coordinator? Is that a new position too?
Yes.
How long's it been around?
Is that new? I'm sorry, is that new? The title, maybe the scope of work is exactly the same, because we're a civil service community, we match up the title with the job description.
Anybody else to this ordinance, this ordinance only? Mr. Frantantone?
I'm looking at some of these things, some pretty good salaries, but in this report, Mr. Iaccone says at this time, there's gonna be no raises related to these. Is that correct?
This is signed absolutely, you're absolutely.
All right, and just one thing, by any chance, Mr. Thomas Banker isn't connected in any way to personnel in these positions, is he?
I don't make personnel decisions, so I wouldn't know.
Good evening, Michael Sheldon. Seeking a little bit of clarification. The planning aid, this new position, is this superseding the economic development consultant that was created earlier this year?
Really? So we created an economic development coordinator?
Coordinator.
And if you remember at that meeting, there were many wide-ranging accusations as to who was going to hold that job and what the initials were going to be. And Mr. Iacono, was that position ever filled? No, he's actually, we abolished that title from our salary order. Thank you.
So the title is now gone?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you for that. I noticed with the three positions, tax assessor, township clerk, and tax collector, the maximum salaries are very specific. Tax assessor, the maximum is 129,725, township clerk is 126,783, and the tax collector is My question here is that are these the current salaries for the three people occupying these positions?
Yes.
They are. So those are the maximum salaries.
That's what they're presently making today.
That's what they are. So you're capping based on what you said, if you want, it's got no raises. So these are essentially caps for the foreseeable future or?
Yeah, those are the current salaries. Come January 2023, there may be a 2% increase if.
Contracts aside. All right, okay. Thank you for that. And that leads me to the question about the court administrator. Whenever I see whole numbers, I automatically start to get a little curious. Court administrator, again, the minimum, all these positions, the minimum is 70,000. The maximum is 115,000. This position, correct if I'm wrong, is held by Yara Basalt. Is her current salary 115,000 dollars?
No.
Do you know of hand what it is approximately?
A hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand, all right. So this would allow her to get potentially 15,000 increase or perhaps a little bit more than that in her salary if she achieves the maximum.
No, this allows me to provide parity to the workforce if I choose so.
All right. But in her situation, this does give her, whereas the other positions, they're already at their maximum.
Mr. Iacono, please correct me if I'm wrong. Finance coordinator is up to 125. Is that person at 125,000? Because that's a round number that Mr. Sheldon failed to mention.
I was getting into that. You didn't, I haven't.
Well, you did say that that was the only round number was court administrator.
If I did say that, then I apologize. I didn't mean, I was going to get to that as well. Okay. The finance coordinator, who currently holds this position?
Mr. Fabiana.
Fabiana, all right. And this is completely different than the CFO position. This finance coordinator and a CFO are night and day. If you could clarify, you know, in a few words, what are the main differences between the CFO and a finance coordinator? Does the finance coordinator report to the CFO or?
Yeah. The finance officer, chief financial officer is just that, the chief financial officer. He has a staff of, say, seven or eight, as the finance coordinator provides day-to-day out of finance operations.
All right, so at the present time, our CFO has a staff of six or seven?
If you take into consideration that the finance department is downstairs, we have tax collector, we have finance coordinator, and then we have clerks that finance.
So all those people are report to the CFO?
That is correct.
Somewhere in the coded ordinance or job, can I find the description for the finance coordinator?
I did email it to you tomorrow.
All right. I would appreciate it if you would do that much. I would greatly like to have that definition. All right, I guess that's it for now. Thank you.
Anybody else in public? Anybody else in public commenting on this ordinance, this ordinance only? Hearing none, seeing none?
Motion closed and move for final?
Motion to close and move for final adoption?
Second.
We have a motion made and second to close and move for final adoption. Kurt Colerole?
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
Next, we have ordinances on the table? Nothing? Hearing none, seeing none? We're going to initiate a motion to open public commenting?
So move second.
We have a motion made and second to open public commenting. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, you are all. Yep. The record reflects it. Mr. Iacono's off to dinner?
Yes. Because it looks like it's on a steak.
I'm going to invite the good chief to come up and fill the seat.
You're supposed to be seated.
It's like a fall here, yeah. We're not running a candy store here, you know? We got this as.
I have candy you want.
Okay, I believe we have a motion made and second. Then we call it all. Let's just call that what we did. Okay, so anybody for public commenting? You have five minutes. We ask you to please try to keep your comments to township business and state your name and address for the record. I saw a hand, Mr. Frantantone.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. You know, my wife and I and other citizens like Eleanor Carino and other people bring things to attention in the council and leave chief for good reason, for sake of things. For example, the tree that was just cut down on Bellevue Avenue here was a very dangerous situation. I've been bringing up now for a couple of years, the problem with our, a couple of our crossing guards. Union Avenue, I'm sorry, Union Avenue and Geralden Street, by school three, you have two crossing guards, justifiable. However, they both stand on the same corner. If you'd like to see a picture, I can show you to it. And they should be opposite corners, you know, take care of it. The same thing goes with the middle school. You have two down there and you need them down there, but not on the same corner talking to each other. Now, I've been talking publicly, personally to the chief on many occasions. They, the middle school on Washington Avenue, two crossing guards, both of them parked their cars in the bus stop. They park in the bus stop, the bus has to let people off, it's a danger. They have to walk in front of other cars while they're trying to cross people across. The same thing on the Union Avenue. The crossing guard that was there parked right up to the crosswalk. And I've been fighting against that as safety hazard. Well, guess what happened last Monday? A car crashed into that crossing guard's car. It was Halloween, there was kids around. Luckily, it was a car and not a kid, all right? There's reason, we have laws. You're not supposed to park in the bus stop, title 39, and you're not supposed to park within 50 feet of a crosswalk. Well, our crossing guards, and nobody takes care of that. So now we had an accident with a car. Are we going to wait for someone to be injured or killed before we address this subject? So I guess nobody's going to answer me tonight, which I don't want answers, I want action. Starting tomorrow, the crossing guards should not park in bus stops or close to a crosswalk. And where the corners are, need two crossing guards, they should be on opposite corners, not standing, talking to each other all the time. Let's see if we can get that done. The other thing is resolution 12 tonight, another cannabis growing thing. We got the other one on Greylock Place, when it was brought up and some of us opposed it, and we said that it's right next to the school nine playground, right up against it. The mayor said, no, it's 700 and something feet away. Well, it's not, because the total distance from Bellevue Vista to Greylock is 742 feet. The older towing company's property, where the cannabis growing is going to be, goes all the way back to the property line of the school nine playground. It butts right up against it. And now you got this new one, it's on the agenda. I hope some of you had the courage to vote it down. It's going in, again, for 50 years, I dealt with Merritt kitchens, I didn't know they're going out. It appears that that's in their building there, which again, is a block away from school number nine. So we don't need two cannabis growing things right next to and a block away from a grammar school. You know, we don't need all these potheads around, or these pothead growing facilities for them. So I hope you vote that down. The other thing is, I think Mr. Graziano brought a stormwater study up, right? I don't know if we need a stormwater study. When your planning board keeps approving all these high-density products where they build right up to the property line, and then the engineers and the so-called experts, oh, there's no problem with the runoff because we're putting a new pipe in. The problem is, the pipe goes to our existing stormwater system, which goes down and creates more flooding for the valley. So we don't need to pay for a study. Common sense would tell you, we got to stop this stuff. This overdevelopment is killing this town little by little.
Do need you to wrap up, Mr. Dros.
Thank you. The final thing, by the way, the anchor program, a lot of people know about it, I've helped some people, some seniors throw it out, but Mr. Mayor, it's not free money. It's our tax dollars from the bloated $50 billion budget that great Murphy passed.
Thank you.
$10 billion increase. Our tax dollars are paying for it, it's not free money.
Thank you. Mr. Dros?
Just a question about the cannabis number 12. Since during an area of rehabilitation, do they qualify for a tax break?
Every. Martino, but I mean, every property townwide does.
No, not the same, because it's an existing building and they're just going to cultivate. So does that qualify them for a five-year tax abatement?
Commercial property to new construction, I believe.
I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
No idea.
Not just new construction, but anybody who applies and applies with the application process, they will get, there is area rehabilitation, because of townwide, it's area rehabilitation, there is, I don't know if it's called a tax break, but it is a, there is a formula that we've gone over many times here.
Right.
So yes, if.
No, just curious, if they qualify for, so it'll be like the first year zero, then 20, 40, 60, 80, 100 percent, correct?
Plus.
Now, just one question.
Plus the grant tax.
Oh, never brought up or anything like that?
Oh, yeah, the improvement.
Just on the improvement. Yeah, that's all. Just curious about that. Just a question on this ordinance here for the 371-411 Main Street. I was reading the ordinance, even though it's not coming up for in here, it says here they prepared a redevelopment plan. You know what the preparation is or how the public can see it before the next meeting? And what they're doing, or, I mean, rumor has it that it's supposedly Home Depot, but the way I'm reading it, it could be something else now. It's the only question I have, would you like to answer that?
We have a copy of it in the council, so therefore if you over.
It's over. Okay.
Anybody else in public? Mr. Frantantone?
Hello, Mr. Frantantone. You know I've been against this cannabis growing in Bellevue. When it was brought before the council and you voted yes to have it come to our town. And more and more in the papers that I've been reading the past month, month and a half, there are a lot of towns that refused to have it in their town and they still don't have it in their town. And I was told, we have to do it or the state will come in and they will do this, that, the other thing. Regardless, these towns are not having it in their town. And this is going to affect our kids, it affects animals and everything. I have everything own, I got a file like this on it, and what we're doing, screwing our kids up with this in our town.
Thank you. Anybody else in public commenting? So.
Good evening again, Michael Sheldon. First question, Mr. Iacono, unfortunately departed, but I wanted to ask, since the town hall is closed tomorrow, because of election day, is there going to be normal trash pickup tomorrow? Is that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I keep harping on the same thing, you know, every two weeks, but the ICOM system, July 1st and the July 12th agendas are still missing. I keep asking, I'm going to keep asking until we all, you know, retire or gone from this planet, but please get the July 1st and July 12th agenda packets on ICOM. The ordinance that was introduced tonight involving the former Kmart property, the ordinance says that this is a redevelopment plan. So I would like to know after I'm back in my seat, how is this different, how is redevelopment plan different fundamentally from an area in need of redevelopment? You know, is there different procedures involved here? Because it's always been my understanding that redevelopment plans, you guys ask the planning board to consider, the planning board does the investigation, makes the referral back to you, and then you decree a redevelopment plan for an area of redevelopment. So I'd like to know what the difference is. Now, in regard to the documents that I just distributed, this has to deal with the second cannabis cultivation facility you're planning to approve. We already have five cannabis retail entities approved in our township. If I have the number correct, at least four, but maybe it's not, it's only four or whatever, except four, but we have kind of a maximum of five. We already have one.
No, we have maximum four.
All right, what, all right, stand corrected then.
And they're not approved. They're not approved by any. The state and council don't approve it. They're not approved.
There were votes earlier in the year for each of these facilities.
They're the only resolutions that are required under the statute.
For the application to the state.
For the application to the state. That doesn't mean they're approved.
All right, all right, thank you for that clarification. There was something concerning about this newest cannabis cultivation facility that I want to bring to your collective attention. I gave you a copy of the State Cannabis Regulatory Commission's letter dated March 28th to the proprietor of the LLC, Cembr LLC. I assume that this is a female named Griselle Barry, and they're giving her a conditional approval for her license. But the thing to note here is that she lists her address as 47 Lloyd Place. I'm at 47 Lloyd Street. Over the years, I sometimes get 47 Lloyd's mail, so I'm familiar with that house, where it is, et cetera. But if you look up the property tax record for 47 Lloyd Street, there's no one with that name living at that address. 47 Lloyd Place is owned, and I have the property tax record, by Roxanne Vega and apparently her husband, who goes by the name of David Lynch, but only her name appears here. But my question is, my concern is, is that is this person using 47 Lloyd Place, it's just a mail stop? I know this happens all over the township. I've got a nearby neighbor, I'm not going to rat out the person, but I know that they allow people to use his address for their postal delivery to make it appear as though they have legal residency available. Is this another instance where this person doesn't actually legally reside at 47 Lloyd Place, but has got some arrangement with the homeowner? You guys need to do some investigation. I'm asking you to at least temporarily table this matter, make the necessary phone calls, bring in the people, find out what's actually going on with this address. Because if you don't take the necessary fiduciary responsibility tonight and seek to clarify this, I'll have no choice but to reach out to the Cannabis Regulatory Commission and bring this to their attention. And I'm sure they won't think very highly of someone maybe playing games with the legal address. After all, cannabis is still a Schedule I narcotics. It may be legalized for recreational use in New Jersey, but federally, it's still a Schedule I narcotic. So I'm asking you to do the right thing. You don't have to rush into this. Table this tonight, you're back here in two weeks, get this resolved, figure out what's going on with the addresses, who's actually living here, if this person is an interloper, if she's actually there. This is a one-family home, by the way. This is a one-family home, by the way, this is not a two-family home. So there's something that doesn't add up here, there's inconsistencies with the address. You have a responsibility and obligation to our community, notwithstanding the fact that we shouldn't have any cannabis cultivation facilities in our township to begin.
Do need you to begin wrapping up, sir.
Right, but look into this, table this tonight, and get to the bottom of this before you take any action. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in public commenting?
Evening, Colonel Fleishman, 33 Main Street. First of all, I want to thank the chief, I did speak to you briefly at the last meeting just before we had adjourned about the two crossing guards on Union. Now, oh no, that's what I was just going to say, I was just going to say, thank you very much. So that has been addressed. This is a general question, because I know, I know Mr. Iacono had to leave, about the mishigas on Main Street, the mess. It still looks atrocious. The fence is half-broken, you know, there's not that much garbage, I mean, leaves, you know, leaves are leaves right now. But have we heard from the state at all in regards to what's being done about, you know, correcting the nastiness of the fence and the broken fence in the area, things like that? So I would appreciate if we can have an answer by the next meeting, because again, I understand he, you know, he had to leave and he makes all those decisions. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in public commenting? Hand in the back?
Main Street, how's it going? Back again, still with the parking. We had a major breakthrough this weekend, we had two cars to woo-hoo that didn't have a sticker that's been here for two or three years, but however, we still had more problems. They did have some kind of street construction that they had to do in front of the new house. And there was a car that was parked there and the police were knocking on everybody's door, trying to find out who it was. And I guess however they did the work without the car moving, but later on, see, what, four or five guys come in, I'm assuming that they were construction workers from the building on Washington Avenue. But that just goes, everybody comes and parks on our street, we have cars that are parked there, and once again, they know how to play the game, like, and pretty soon, we're going to, streets, we're going to stop. So then they're going to be there forever. There's cars that, Outstate Place, that's been there for, one car in particular has been there for two weeks, you know, moving back and forth, so nothing can be done, but, and I know there's no law against inconsiderate neighbors or inconsiderate people. However, but our Main Street, a couple of years ago, they did the street all over again so we don't have any trees. There's two trees that's way down at the end of the street. Gentleman was blowing his leaves, fine, I assumed he was blowing them so that he can bag them up. However, I watched the man blow the leaves over to the other side of the street, I, which I know I shouldn't have done, and everybody's telling me after the fact, but I went down the street thinking that maybe he didn't know, even though he's lived there for a while or he made a mistake, you know, look, you can't do that. So now leaves are all the way down the street, that when I got to go out and pick them up, and I don't appreciate that. I don't know, I know there's no law, I guess, like, nothing can be done, but it's very obvious where the leaves came from, since it's only one street and you just see the leaves and you know where they are, but any kind of help, especially with this parking. And I don't know if permit parking is the thing that we're trying to advocate for, I might be shooting myself in the foot, but I don't know, but, you know, please, something's got to be done, like, you could cut it down at any time and you could see, like, the cars, you know, who's supposed to be there and who's playing the game. It's just, it's a quality of life, you know, something has, I'm sure it can be done, I appreciate it, thank you.
So I do think, I mean, I think that something is starting to be done, as you started this-
But that's it.
After being honest, a lot has been done.
Well, they painted yellow down at the end of the street, but however, you can't see it because there's cars parked there all the time. And this was the first time that I seen the police in that area in I don't know how long, so that was a-
I think we'll see them more.
That was a good thing.
Understood, thank you. Anybody else in public commenting? Entertainer motion to close?
Close.
We have a motion made in second to close public comment, and clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depany?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
Clerk, who dialed in?
Yes.
Yes, we are.
You are. Anybody on the open line? Deputy Mayor? Hearing none, it's not here.
No, it's over.
Oh, it's over. Anybody out there? Okay. So I think we ready to vote, we ready to?
We can let it stand.
We let it stand. Resolutions? Eight, please call eight and nine, please, please.
Eight, nine, 12, 15.
12, 15?
Yep.
I'm sorry, so we have eight, nine?
12. 12 and 15. That's fine.
Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion to move to consult agenda?
Motion. Second.
We have a motion made in second to move to consult agenda, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli. Depany?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
We can go eight and nine together, please?
Motion. Second.
We have a motion made in second to move Resolution Eight and Resolution Nine together. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depany?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Standing. Resolution number 12.
Table, table number 12. Second.
We have a motion made in second for a table, so therefore a yes vote is to table, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
No.
Depany?
No.
Graziano?
No.
Notori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
No.
Need a motion move, Resolution number 12?
15. 12.
Well, we have to do something with that.
Go ahead.
Have to do something. So is there a motion to move?
Yes, there is.
There's a second to move.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to move Resolution number 12, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Depany?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notori?
No.
Robel?
No.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
Resolution number 15. We have a discussion?
Yeah, I just want to make a quick comment here. Hopefully next meeting, we'll have James and Steve Masood in here. These are two firemen that did an exceptional job in saving a man's life. We couldn't get him here this week, but we'll get him here hopefully during next meeting.